Pledge of limitations. A pledge of limitations to the society of the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of the Pledge of Order. First item on our agenda is to approve minutes from the previous meeting. Motion and second to approve minutes. Any corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills. Anything jump out at anybody? And then those really big ones to the enforcement center. Our annual authorities and joint powers of agreements. This spelling bee that's every year, right?
I will second.
Then motion and a second to approve the bills. And I'm going to assume that that includes the extras on our desk. A few of those listed as well. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Yesner?
Aye.
Bo?
Aye.
Will Cummings?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
You think those are paid financials? I don't know if we got financials added in our packets. Anybody get a financial? Can we approve those at our next meeting? Uh, treasurer's checks. List of treasurer's checks on our agenda. And I'm thinking those refunds are, um, over taxes?
Yes.
Yep. Those are, I think, mortgage companies.
It's pretty common every year that.
Yep.
I will approve the current tax. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks as presented. Roll call, please.
Will Cummings?
Aye.
Yesner?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Bo?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Treasurer checks are approved. Any additions to the agenda? Anybody have anything that's not listed, not on there? If not, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda's approved. First item up is treasurer Lisa Deese. Morning Lisa.
Good morning. Um, I guess we haven't figured out what you want to go further into the municipal bonds? Or you want to invest into a CD again?
I think our last, our last meeting question, do you know what the CD rates are right now?
Yeah, I'm getting about four point zero six, four point one six. That's that one bank, I'm getting that. The other ones aren't doing close to that.
And that's how much money?
Two million for three months.
But I'm saying that's like two million dollars in the other.
No, I've got two CDs over there right now. At two million apiece. One's getting four point zero six, one's getting four point one six. But we have this three million sitting in Bremmer. That was in CDs prior, that wasn't getting that much. And then you guys had talked about maybe putting it in municipal bonds? Like adding to our municipal bonds? I guess I kind of was leaving that up to you guys.
All right, then there is, uh, fees associated with that in that spreadsheet that's included in our packets. Some of the different treasury market fees that are associated with that, some of the, um, interest that can occur on them, some of the charges that can occur on them.
Yeah, because that gets to be about seventy-five hundred dollars a year for the fees.
For the fees.
On the CDs?
No, on your municipal bonds.
I would suggest taking the money and just put it back in the CDs for the fact that you're getting a really good rate at CDs right now.
I don't know.
That's my suggestion. Can the three million right now, is that the four percent where you're getting the good interest or not?
No, that was, one of it was COVID money that I put two million in. And then we got some, first, you know, in January, we get money from the state to cover our social services. So I wasn't just going to let it sit in the money market, so I pulled it out and put it into a CD. For three months, knowing that we can manage.
So can you lock this in for that thirteen month, when you do that verfing right now or not?
Um, sometimes when I bid it out, I get better interest rates.
Oh.
It's up to you guys, whatever, I mean, and everything, you know, I've bid it out amongst the banks we have. I've added Bavera to the depository, um.
Basically, there's five million dollars out there to put in the CD. Well, two million is a.
Three.
Three. The others tied up in CDs.
Yeah, they're already in.
Yeah, we've got, let's see here. Municipal, you know, the municipal, that we've got over three million in there. And then I just have the three million sitting in savings that we took out from CDs. It's just been sitting there until we've kind of made a decision.
I'll make a motion and we put the three million back in the CDs. Bated out.
For three months or six months or?
I would say whatever you can get the big highest rate out of.
Good.
I'll make that move.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll start.
Putting the CDs or the three million from Bremmer into a CD. We, uh, any further discussion?
And I think if I do it as a lump sum, could probably get more.
What will that leave us then for those that are asking in three months?
That's, that's different. That's the COVID money that's already been in a month.
I get that, but well, how much was that a month? We're going to leave not invested or not even.
Um.
It's only like two hundred.
Two fifty three, yeah.
Yep, yep.
But that money will be coming out, you know, when you guys decide to give to your.
Right. And that we planned it that way.
Yeah, yeah, because I didn't want to tie that up.
Any further discussions? If not, uh, roll call on this. One down.
Yeah. Will Cummings?
Aye.
Yesner?
Yeah.
Otis?
Aye.
Bo?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye. Motion carries. And while you're here, can we move up that old business of adding Bavera Bank as a depository?
Yeah, I'd like to do that because, well, I'm talking about the two CDs right now.
When we, at the beginning of the year, if you recall, we had several different first of the year motions. One was designated depositories for the, uh, public funds for Ramsey County. And we had listed first, what is it?
First United.
First United, Bremmer, and Western. Now, we need to add Bavera. Um, and those two motions that we had kind of conflict because we gave our treasury the authorization to deposit those monies as the she socket. And, uh, but it didn't designate where those deposits were to go. And so I think by adding this, this Bavera certainly clarifies and eliminates that. So I would like a motion to approve or add Bavera Bank as a depository for Ramsey County Public Funds.
I would draw the.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to add Bavera as a designated depository for public funds. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else Lisa?
Uh, yeah, we've got, um, the Ramsey County spelling bee today. And, um, it starts between, we've got registration from eight to nine. And then we got written, and then we've got the oral one. Um, if you find some time, you should come over and chat with the kids. Our sheriff is one of the judges. And then we've got the chief of police is a judge, and we've got Mr. Mole, Mayor Mole is a judge. And Bo Cummings is going to do our pronouncing. And we have lots of volunteers and, um, I think you should stop over and check out the little kids.
And it starts at what time to do that?
Um, we're going to start here between eight and nine, so I'm.
Between eight and nine, so better poke a loop at it.
Yeah, and then I need the camera system because they're going to livestream it.
Okay.
So, but parents and it's open to the public this year. Last year it wasn't, so. Feel free to stop over.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. That's fine.
All right, continue on, uh, extension office. We have Cindy Olson with us this morning. Thank you Cindy.
Well, you're getting the extension report, BME. By default, Sarah is ill and, um, Lindsay's on her way in far before advanced crop advisory workshop, so they left these notes. Um, in the 4H world, our food candies' ails are in full swing. If anyone's interested, let us know. Um, that's our major fundraiser for the year for 4H. Shooting sports, area full district match this weekend, which we host. Um, we are doing part of it via postal, which means we sent targets out to other counties prior to. And that kind of started just because of COVID and long distances to drive, so. Archery classes will begin in March, and we're pretty full up there. This year, we're starting a new program in 4H. It's called Guardians for Health. This is going to be through our shooting sports, um, program. It's a collaboration between Brown University, Rhode Island Hospital, and a firm at the Aspen Institute and for shooting sports. Um, Tricia Berg will be the leading instructor, and I'll be the extension liaison for this program. It's a three-hour workshop, which is taught in one-hour increments. It educates youth about different types of firearm injuries, different types of risks and signs, the risks for firearm injury. Um, it teaches a variety of strategies that you can safely implement to reduce the risk and breaks down barriers to taking action, so these kids can recognize if there are risks going on in the community. Um, Lindsay left some A and R notes, uh, like I said, she got her way to advanced crop advisors workshop. Lake Region Extension Roundup went very well this year with approximately four hundred and fifty attendees daily. New this year were roundtable discussions, and they went over very well. Um, some upcoming events she has is recertification for private pesticide license trainings. That will be February sixteenth, March fourteenth, and May thirtieth. Um, Ramsey County Crop Improvement Association meeting is coming up with the commodity elections that take place with that. That's going to be Tuesday, February twenty-first. Um, Ranchers Night Out had to be rescheduled to February twenty-third because of our December blizzards, so that is going to be at the Lake Region Livestock Barn. Um, it's a free supper at five o'clock, and then the program at six o'clock will feature Mark Miller and Gerald Stoker. They'll be covering cow nutrition and herd health considerations at cabin time. Um, we're planning a new program for our extension this year. It's going to be the Progressive Ag Safety Day. Uh, plans are to have seven to eight booths with various types of safety issues addressing it, addressing young people. Um, it's going to be geared towards the fifth graders in all of Ramsey County. Lindsay's been trained as a coordinator, and I will be the, I've been trained to be the assistant. Um, Sarah left a couple notes. She's just finished up on the move to Better Health. Um, at St. Joe's, grades five through eight. Cooking classes are coming up at the Hope Center. Um, nutrition education also in the elementary, um, schools. And then planning has begun. We're going to bring back our Field to Fork, which is an agricultural day for all the fourth graders in Ramsey County where they come and learn about where their food comes from. Pretty much all I got. You have any questions?
Is that kind of, uh, the change from, was it Pizza Day?
It used to be called Pizza Day, yeah, and now Extension has given us a program, so it's called, we've done Field to Fork. It's pretty much the same thing where we have booths, um, that are on beef and swine, plants, grinding wheat, so they see where their bread and soap comes from, things like that. Yeah.
Wonderful. Any questions for Cindy?
Sarah and Lindsay will be back next week, or next week, month.
Thank you very much Cindy.
Kevin, morning.
Morning.
Not too much to bring up this morning. Um, we're paying for another one of our bridge inspections that was done last fall. That's below the threshold, so it doesn't need the motion, but we have to send that certification letter explaining where we have our local match from. So I would give motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign that certification form. Everybody familiar with what we're talking about?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and have the chairman and auditor sign off on where we received our local match from the bridge inspection. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the only other thing I had to bring up was, uh, finally got a final poll on uh, how much BMA damage we had in twenty-two. It's one point seven million dollars. Uh, we didn't get very many culvers last year, so it's mostly gravel with the townships and the county god.
I think the county god. Two hundred and fifty dollars in gravel. The rest is for the township. We got money for it.
Pardon me?
We got money for it. Actual dollars, a little bit, probably less than three thousand. Three hundred thousand.
There is one point seven million damages.
It's going to slowly trickle down. Anything else? The, the townships will have next summer and then the following summer to do that, which is going to be tough for the contractors. Got all that done one year anyways, so.
Correct.
Lot of work.
Lot of work. And if we were the only county or just one township, it would be even correct. Everybody in the state had a similar type of problems, and contractors were spread thin, so. Appreciate it. Thank you Kevin. Anything else?
That's all I have. We'll see you on something between questions.
No?
Do you need Jeff to sign that thing then?
That's our dear.
Thank you. Sheriff Lang?
How are you guys this morning?
Fantastic. How are you?
Good. First thing I want to talk to you guys about is, uh, we got an opportunity to take part in a grant through Vision Zero. Uh, they got five different programs that we can use for overtime for, for our officers. Uh, so they got a speed enforcement, uh, impaired driving, and occupant, uh, safety. So basically seatbelt. And what it entails is we have to sign a contract with them. Most of these programs, they got dates set as to when they would run. We got to put in two to four shifts. And we can regulate the, the shift sets to however long we want, two hours, four hours, if you want six hours. Uh, just so they can get a little bit of overtime. We keep track of the stats. Uh, we submit it to the state, and the state will reimburse the county for the overtime paid. So I'm just looking for, uh, some permission to, let me enter in the contract to, uh, do the three of these overtime programs for the deputies.
So, and a motion for, uh, Sheriff Lang to enter into a contract with Vision Zero?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion, any questions for Sheriff on those? If not, in all, in favor of joining, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the other thing I had is we, uh, going through some of our equipment, and we noticed that we've had two spike strips that were out of service because they were damaged beyond repair. Uh, so we need to order two more. We decided to go with the Stinger Spike System. Uh, they cost about six hundred and eight dollars apiece. Uh, the reason we decided to go with them, we got a couple of them already, but once you deploy them, uh, they get run over and the spikes are missing, they replace the spikes for nothing. So we're not constantly replacing the strip. So just thought I'd let you know, I got room in my budget for it, but I'll be going and seeking to, uh, get them here shortly. I got laundry list this morning, I'm sorry. Uh, I think I gave some information to Andy to give to you as far as additional weights for our patrol vehicles. And of course, the legal. We thought we had everybody send their stuff in and get to the office this morning. So, and there's another bid.
This thing you're presenting?
Yes.
Is this with the lights and that push guard or what's up with?
It'd be with the lights and the push, push guard. We kind of spurred this recently with all the fog and everything. We've had a couple of traffic accidents where the deputies have been on scene along with, uh, other emergency vehicles. Uh, my one deputy almost got hit twice. And the last time, he said the vehicle brushed him. And it was, uh, because it, they just come out of fog and they're right there, and they said they're not seeing the lights on the vehicle, the top lights, who we got just are cutting it. Even from the front, they're not as visible off to the sides. Uh, so we took a look and we start, uh, looking at what we can add without throwing a ton of holes into the car. And saves some values. We come up with putting the push bumper on the front where you could attach the lights to it. And then add the next pair of high intense bar in the back, but get it lower in the back. So like when you're look, coming through fog, everybody's kind of concentrating on the road. So it's more eye level to catch their, their line of sight. Lights and sirens just sent us this this morning. Bill, you can kind of break it down a little bit. And tell you, now, don't get sticker shock when you see the twenty-seven thousand. It's just a couple of different options, and when they added it all up, that was their grand total. We got it broken down. It's a little, a little better than that. But Midstate, we got a bid from Midstate Wireless, and all they did was bid for the push bumpers and the fender wraps. And they came in at fifteen thousand uh, one hundred and two dollars to equip, uh, all nine of our vehicles. And the push bumper would have the legs and the, built in the push guards. MBS Company is out of South Dakota. Uh, they came in at thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight thirty with push bumpers and the fender wrap uh, with the lights in it. And the light bars in the back that we were requesting was an additional four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars for the grand total of seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents. Bill, you got the lights and sirens broken down?
I hope so. Lights and sirens, he, I talked to him last night, and he brought up a good point. The bumpers on the front that have lights built into them have a round tube on top, and the, where the lights go in, they're laser cut to fit the specific light. If we hit a deer at low speeds and barely bend that bar or anything like that, or hit a pheasant, uh, it distorts that bar enough where you can't fit another light in there, and you have to buy that whole bumper. So what he did is he priced out bar, lighted bars that come with the lights and light bars and had lights for pickups. So there's four different scenarios here. The rear and a lighted bar for all nine vehicles is fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. A bumper without lights with expensive, he quoted out two separate lights, one's four times brighter than the other one. But the bumper with expensive lights with headlight guards, the fifteen thousand doesn't include the headlight wraparound. The expensive bar with the headlight guards and the rear with expensive lights is twenty thousand one forty-two. Just the bumper and the, uh, with expensive lights in the rear is sixteen thousand seven eighty-five. And then the bumper with cheap lights with a guard and rear lights is sixteen thousand six forty-two. But if we go with a non-lighted bar and add lights to them, and we bend the bar in some minor way, we can, and break the light, we can replace the light relatively easily without having to replace the whole bar.
And what I did when I started is I reached out to all the deputies and asked them uh, any time that they had a close incident or where they had an issue where the lights were inadequate. They felt that nobody could see them. Uh, I got letters here from quite a few of the deputies that laid numerous times where they had incidences where disturbed top light just wasn't enough, be it on traffic stops and inclement weather. Um, I think this is a great concern to, uh, my deputies and the general public. I know it's a lot of money, but I think it's, it's needed.
Sheriff Lang, which, uh, which option would you prefer?
You know, just quickly going over what, uh, we got from lights and sirens. I like his option where we can bolt the stuff on. Because if we happen to hit a deer and it bends them that up there a little bit, at least we, we can, we can control that. And the lights on that he quoted there are better lights than are coming on with the built-in. They're more visible. They got a little bit of a pitch to them. Uh, so we've got more of an angle, so it gets more out to the side, so we're getting more three sixty, at least a good one eighty. So, which is, which is huge compared to what we got right now.
Not to mention legality issues, like with my patrol car, when I turn on my scene lights, it lights up the entire front of the car white. And I have zero red and blue to the front. So if I stop the car at nine, I turn on my light bar, I have no flashing red and blue to the front. So that's what holds somebody on a traffic stop is the red and blue. Without it, they can drive off, and legally, I have nothing to do with it. The other issue is, by statute, when we deploy spikes, we have to turn on reds and blues. Well, my spikes are in the back of my Durango. I opened that rear hatch that blocks my light bar.
So that's why we want to bring them down in the hatch more like eyes, or if you're sitting in the car, so it doesn't.
So for the, the option that you said there, look at like.
So for the, the option that you said there, look at like eighteen thousand dollars? With the better lighting?
With the, the bumper with the guards and the rear light, the expensive lights is twenty thousand, one forty-two, if I read my check, is that right? And these expensive lights, they're two hundred and nine dollars apiece and for all nine, there's thirty-six of them. But they're four times brighter than the other ones you quoted out at a hundred and nineteen dollars apiece.
And this is stuff that we can install. It's plug and play.
I like the idea that you can replace the light. Obviously, the lights burn out.
Right.
You hit stuff.
Yeah, you said peasants and that, that part of it, that part of it is a no winner.
Yeah, we've, the incidents that the deputies laid out, they've been on traffic stops, vehicles were going back into the car, points of minimal damage. Well, with the push bumper, we probably eliminate that, some fifth year.
So you plan on installing all this stuff yourself?
Yes. And we got, we just, we'll get to that when we get orders.
Did they say what the availability was?
I didn't ask. He, I was talking to him at ten o'clock last night. He finally got back to me and put together a quote at four. And called me and I tried to decipher, there was a lot of information we put in his quote. And I had to call him back. He called me back at ten o'clock last night trying to decipher all this, individual pieces he quoted out.
Is this something that we can take out of the COVID money?
And that first batch of COVID dollars that we received, there's some money left that we can utilize for this, some, maybe?
We're just talking about computers yet, Joe.
I know, he's got some other asks too. But whatever we can do to make you guys safer out there. I don't think we've been afraid to spend money when it comes to that. All we need is, is for you to be asking. And so I think we can find some money. It's just. Right. We could. So even though it's not necessarily in your budget, we've got a new coming into this that there may be some operational changes with the change of sheriff. And so, don't let that necessarily hold you back when you're asking. So, but if we found deficiencies and safety concerns for our deputies, we want to alleviate that as soon as possible. Continue.
Uh, you know, to go on to the radio, we got two new cars that we bid for. So we put an order in for two mobile radios and two portables, so they're, they're back to the set. And that came to twenty seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. I know there was money put away or put aside for our radios.
Twenty seven thousand.
Yeah.
Five seventy-nine.
Eighty-eight. They're not cheap and we got a few more to go and then we'll have them all swapped out.
It's amazing how expensive radios have become. And there's two Durangos that were in the twenty-three budget that usually were ordered October, November timeframe, but I think according Sheriff Nelson wanted to wait and see and give you the opportunity to order what you like.
Right.
So, still in the budget, but needs to get ordered before, because I'm sure it's going to take a few months for it to arrive.
Yeah, I went out and I talked to him. I have Ford and I talked to him at the Chrysler dealership. Told him when I wanted my bids in. Chrysler is the only one that's got back to me with a bid and they're at forty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars. It's about five thousand dollars more than last year's. And he showed me that, that's how much the car went up in price. And that's everything that we would want, matches what we want. I think we'll probably stick with the Durangos. It just makes it easier when we start swapping the equipment out and they kind of fits and rolls right in, so.
And those Durangos have been working well?
I, I like them. I actually wear by them. They're, yeah. And as soon as I can get them ordered, the fleet, fleet pricing is still up and availability is good right now.
We should probably convert, capitalize these, break them apart, do the, the two vehicles and the radios for those vehicles, maybe? We want to do that. And then let you continue on with the computers and some of the other stuff that you have on your list.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have bids for that two Dodge Durango pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's department along with the motor rotor radio bids. Two in-car, two portables, twenty seven thousand, five seventy-nine, eighty-eight. And the vehicles were forty-one oh six apiece? One oh six. So, motion to approve or accept the.
So moved. To accept the bid for the Durangos. I will second that.
Further discussion on the motion for the two new Durangos and flip them ours with in-car and portable radios?
The vehicles were out of the budget earlier.
Yep.
But were the radios?
Right.
Yes. Do you think Ford was interested? I mean, my thought is, are they going to put a bid later?
When I talked to Ford, I know they just bid out a couple other ones, so he didn't think it would have any, or any problem getting them into my timeframe, but he can't let me believe that we're going to be more expensive than what we're ordering.
I think this is what they did last year too.
No.
Going to cost us ten grand more.
Right. Okay, further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So, go ahead and get those ordered done and sooner the better, right?
Yeah. And I would plan on trading in our two old ones going in. That way we try to figure out whether we're going to sell them or have enough for an auction.
Perfect.
Drop the price out a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, that way they're not.
So they, do they put all the lighting on or do we got to take?
We do that.
Yeah.
Budgeted separately for that eight week.
Yeah, I remember that. Just a long, weird button.
No.
Little bit.
So the other items on your needs list would be computer replacements?
Yep. With the CAD system coming into play, I give Candy one from Baycom. You should have that. And Mr. Mo, he reached out to Dell. We tried dealing directly with Dell. We did not get a quote from them. What they did tell us was that they would be eight months behind in getting the docking stations for in the squad cars. That's why they did not send us a bid directly from the factory. Steve was able to obtain a bid. It's going to give us four docking stations in the office, nine docking stations for all our units, plus the computer. And it's ready. I think it comes in right around forty-five thousand and some change. Baycom, I mean, it's a Panasonic. This is what most law enforcement uses, highway patrol uses, a lot of agencies around, like Benson County and some of our other agencies around us use. Their bid comes in at fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen, but we get a three-year service plan along with it and these computers are tough. These are the ones that we've been using. They're the old, of course, we've got the old highway patrol ones. They're ten years old. They still function. They've been beat up. They're a really good computer and, but you're paying for it. But with the computers we got now, there's no way that it will be able to keep up with the CAD system going in, so we'll have to upgrade our computers. And by getting docking stations for in the office, we can put four of them in there. I can eliminate the six, eight computers that we got in there and they can just come in and plug in and do their work right there.
So essentially, you're getting rid of the cost of the desk computer.
Yes.
As you're going to use this. So if you take what it would cost to replace those desk computers, you're probably taking another fifteen thousand off of it. Pretty close, yes. I mean, if you look at replacing them, I mean, it's just a fool's effort.
Any delivery times on either option?
Uh, we know for the computers and the docking stations from.
Baycom?
Baycom. They said they got everything in stock and they get it through us relatively quick. Dell is up in the air because when we were dealing with them and talking to them, they were telling us it was eight months out for docking stations in the vehicles. But they were trying to find other options and they said if they could find other options, they'd submit a bid. So the factory itself didn't send a bid to me. So that's my only concern is I can't wait eight months for a docking station.
That major concerns of switching things out in the vehicles? Or is that something that you can do internally or help with Shanks and Mo and?
We can swap them out until only as good and easy. Like bracket wise and stuff, it won't take us long to do that. You plug your computer in and you just put your programming in and either Shanks or Mo. Shouldn't take them very long to set their computers up and have them running.
Okay. And then these computers are going to work with the new system?
Yes. What we did was we took the specs from what the CAD would require and we built off of that. And we looked at like with the highway patrol that run in the CAD and the other.
I was just going to add a question. So when we run the CAD, or once we go to this CAD, we're going to be able to communicate with Benson County and the state patrol and all that?
Yeah, we may be able to see where everybody's at.
Where right now it's not that easy. We don't have people's old, we don't have their radio.
Right.
And the Baycom, you said, has a two-year service contract with it. I know the Panasonic were, they're a good one, just what we use in the mechanics, do the exact same thing.
Ever since they came out with that tough book, it's kind of been standard.
Yes.
First responders and those out in the field. They're really good, very durable notebooks.
So Candy, where, where do we go with, where do we get the money from?
This would be, this would be the COVID funds.
Yep.
So then.
And then the COVID fund is done.
Let's take care of this. And so then if we were.
It came in under budget.
So then if we, if we were to do the radios, we have to find something, or not the radios, excuse me, the lights, we have to find something.
Well, you can take that out of the argument. It's only twenty thousand.
No, I'm just, just feeling.
Yeah.
Make sure that. Make sure we have.
Yeah, different, different pots of, of funds.
Yeah.
We got that initial COVID dollars for, from the state for, he was basically for first responders.
Yes.
Doing overtime and that through COVID pandemic and had no restrictions on it.
Essentially saved money getting a grant for overtime as well.
So we, we've had a lot of various uses for that, those funds over the past year, year and a half. And this would double up the remainder of that money and it goes to a good cause, I think, and something that's going to be needed sooner than later.
Essentially, we got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ten years is too long, you know, updated computers.
Yeah. Well, and waiting, and waiting eight months would put us behind the eight ball with, with the new central square CAD system at the LEC, so. So.
I'd be, I'd be willing to make a motion that we go with with Panasonic, I'll quote here. I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the request from Sheriff Lang? Sheriff, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, the only other thing is we did interviews yesterday to try to hire two more deputies. We had two more to interview on Wednesday.
I had to hold you up and I talked to the computers now.
Mr. Beer?
Nothing on the computers. We got everything in Baymont or Baycom, Ford. And for nine of them, nine computers and then four desktop dock, docking stations. Total cost fifty-three, four, three fourteen. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we've come back to the light and siren options.
So, I, I have one question on the light and siren and maybe you can answer it. Is there anything out there that they do for safety? Like is there any grants or anything else that we see that they do for?
That's personally, I'm just going to look forward to see.
I'm just asking a question, you know, because it's sensitive, it's a safety thing, maybe.
In fact, in reading bills for that quote, the light bar that they, he was talking about, admitting is high intensity one. So if, like most cars run tinted windows, they blast through the tinted window. So, we don't got much tint on our back windows, so they should really stick out.
Well, visibility is, is key. You know, you always hear these news reports of people not being, paying enough attention and running into the back patrol cars. And thank God that hasn't happened to us and we need to rectify the invisibility portion when it's, you know, I've been out there when it's that foggy and you're right, you can't see and.
I'm pretty sure in the last quarter in the state of North Dakota, there's been like three or four state patrol, whatever, they didn't get it.
No. So.
Yeah, I don't know, any current grants or just, um, they're tough, the president's tough.
So do we have any total, total for the lights and push bars and?
What, what did you have for your grand total? Was it?
That was.
Twenty thousand, one forty-two.
Did the other vendors have that, did they really quote?
What's that?
Did the other vendors have that, did they really quote? They, what they quoted was basically the built-in lights.
Yeah, there's more than one pool.
Yeah.
Through the lights and siren, the bumper with the high intensity, four time brighter lights, expensive lights and the headlight wraparound to protect the headlights and the rear lights was twenty thousand, one forty-two. and the rear lights was twenty thousand, one forty-two.
And that'd be enough to get all your vehicles currently and then?
That was for all nine vehicles with the center section of the bumper, wraparound headlights, and enough lights to outfit all nine with rear lights and front lights.
So that's all work on the new vehicles then too?
This includes the two new Durangos. It does not include the two pickups that were getting rotated out when most new Durangos come out.
Okay.
So are these universal or are they made for, you know, actual vehicles we have?
From what I see, the Durangos are universal, uh, the mounting brackets are different from the twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty Durangos to the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. But from what I understand, the center section is the same. The actual center bumper part, right?
It's just a wraparound.
Right, yeah. And I do have estimates on just the center section without wraparounds, so we put lights on. The only thing is, you know, a headlight for one of these new Durangos, from what I understand, is twenty-six hundred dollars. So for one headlight, you can buy all the wraparounds to the entire fleet, pretty much.
Sheriff.
Do we have a, a motion at all for the, the lights and announcements for the insurance department?
I will move.
Okay, so we go with the twenty thousand, one forty-two. Okay, second. We have a motion, we have a second. Can you further discussion on the light siren bid for the insurance department? If not, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So we'll go ahead and get that taken care of as well.
Okay.
Anything else, Sheriff?
Uh, just going through some job interviews, uh, to replace two deputies, uh, we interviewed uh, four yesterday, got two tomorrow. Got some good candidates so far. I got uh, Commissioner Gessner is sitting in on the interview board along with uh, the state commissioner and a few sergeants. Uh, so we got pretty good cross-reference people asking questions and stuff, but uh, so far we've we've identified a couple that uh, are looking good, we'll see with the other two and they may need a little bit of training, but I think it's something that we can invest in them, so.
Anything else?
Other than for me, that'd be it, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, appreciate your work, thank you. Commissioner Gessner, do you have anything?
Uh, I, I thought we had two exceptional candidates, I thought it was for yesterday.
Good.
And the uh, blasted, had to paddle uphill pretty hard.
Okay, well, I know Sheriff Lang has to uh, get to judging some spelling bee.
Yeah.
I appreciate you doing that and again, thank you and.
Oh, thank you.
Definitely, thank you for coming in.
I'll be back home.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, I'm going back.
Have a good day.
Have a good day, thank you. All right, should we uh, holler at the water board? See if they got a moment to come in? Randy, on the water board meeting across the hall from us this morning, uh, have a brief update. Yeah, good morning, Brian, welcome.
So pretty quiet in our country, we have, uh, have a meeting with Tabler County on our drain ten that we're putting together, ten finalized. Uh, some of the smaller details of it, uh, how the assessments are. Kind of decided the lower end is going to be paying a reduced rate and we just came up with boundaries for that and uh, a lot of the problems with that are Tabler County's to deal with, they're, they've got some personalities up there that they're working with and they were the ones that uh, actually put the project down the first time, so. On our end, we're just kind of waiting. But I, like I said before, I think we've got a decent project that's actually in better shape now with the time that's been spent on it after hearing the issues that came up first time, we've dealt with a lot of them and uh, hopefully this time when it goes, as it goes forward, uh, works out a little better. Otherwise, uh, uh, like today's project is just a deal of cattail spraying on our SaaS channels, that's one of the things we can do. So we'll be spending the public's money and give them a rather direct benefit of getting those channels sprayed that voted into assessments. Well, it's something that, uh, there was a lot of years, there wasn't much done on it. Did hear a lot of pushback from farmers up in the areas that weren't getting anything for money that they had paid in and uh, the last meeting we had, we actually had some of those guys in to advise us on how to take care of their channels. That's uh, something that we wanted to have done for a while is instead of just a few guys on a board tables deciding how to maintain those channels to get the landowners and uh, farmers right from the area in to pinpoint what needs to be done up there, what needs to be cleaned, what needs to be sprayed. Instead of just uh, waiting a few years until it gets to be a big problem and then having to spend a lot of money to fix it. So heard that, actually in the last couple of weeks, I've heard a, quite a few guys that were really happy with that, but they're, have a say in that, so. So we'll try to do more of that in the future and should keep some of the phone calls to you guys down.
We appreciate that. You know, water projects are always come with a little bit of controversy. Who's benefiting and who's not benefiting and who's receiving the water and hey, is it somebody's problem being pushed upon somebody else and so it's always, I don't know if there's ever been an assessment asked for a water project that's been a hundred percent in agreement, but and we appreciate you guys coming in and having that open conversation with commissioners, keeping everybody involved in the process. Um, one of the things that was discussed in the interim legislative committee on that water drainage, um, was there's companies out in the uh, in the state that feel like they don't have the communication and the oversight uh, with their water boards and the water boards were doing whatever they felt was right without commissioner or highway department's involvement and that leads to a lot of consternation and so we appreciate you coming in and letting us know what's going on in the world and keep everybody informed.
Well, it's uh, one of those issues that uh, we brought it up in the past to get you guys in and it's almost like pulling teeth to get anybody to show up. But uh, when they did, they were happy, I guess. Uh, one thing that did come up, um, Hammer Sullivan drain, I think we've talked in the past that you've got that old concrete bridge that's uh, found out in the country, March the seventeen. Uh, somebody was asking if that happened to disappear and a culvert needed to be put in there with the county, uh, have any issues with that to?
That's actually a box culvert, so yeah, if somebody wants to work on it, I don't matter.
But it's something that, it's prairie trails now, there must have been a road there.
One of this is probably, what, three by three or four by four, maybe, it's not real big, but it's pretty tiny.
When the Hammer Sullivan came in, we must have added a couple culverts alongside of it. And now the guys that do want to use it, they're worried about the equipment fitting across that, you know, it used to have a pipe guardrails on it and they got cut off, I don't know, about thirty-five years ago. They're just worried about whether the equipment can go across that bridge much longer or not and one guy said, well, if it happened to disappear out of there, would the county help replace the culvert? If everything was done, so. Said we can have a discussion about that, I think the county, they don't have to spend much to replace it, we'd probably be happy to talk, but.
That was really not a bridge, it's just basically a concrete.
Exactly, and it's too short, so the only equipment's given.
Wire.
Yeah.
But it's two of them right in that country, one of them's on the road though, so that's, that'll be yours to deal with someday, but that one's, at least the road is big enough, nobody even notices it there.
It's on prairie trail, but yeah, it's still getting used a lot.
But one to the west is on the road. That runs to cemetery and circling.
Oh.
But.
Yeah.
You won't hear much on that one, I don't think, it's deep enough and it's doing its job that quickly yet, so.
It, it's hard to talk about water problems when all the water's frozen. You know, things are imploding and you can't see, visualize where things are going until the stone gets off the landscape and that's where issues will come about and so we look forward to you guys coming in on a, on a regular basis, appreciate you guys adjusting your schedules to meet with us.
We're matching up now and uh, everything should probably run a little smoother, our office is really uh, picked up as uh, getting the, our records in order, uh, we had uh, had a lot of things that we knew we needed to get done and I think now we're getting the records, uh, keeping, is at a lot better place, so we we can break down what we need to and pinpoint it to each assessment and everything's just working a whole lot better than, uh, than it has in the past. COVID years were, they were kind of tough right then, we were, you know, with the shutdown here and uh, go changing our personnel, uh, but uh, feel we're in a lot better shape where we uh, want to be right now, so.
Fantastic, and uh, your office administrator Stacy is doing a fantastic job.
We were lucky to end up with her.
Yeah.
She's been fighting it, uh, taking on the responsibility and learning the excess parts of the job, but now she's starting to decide that it is a little interesting anyway, so.
There, there's a lot that uh, comes with the water boards and uh, roles and responsibilities are great and been doing it for a number of years and I still don't understand it all, so.
Uh, I was just thinking this morning that uh, Marlene was probably the first one that was hired there that wasn't there because of water. She was the first just uh, true employee that came in off the street and Stacy came in off the street, but now she's uh, uh, she's been fighting back about learnings some of the stuff that uh, we were pushing on her that were not part of the original responsibilities, but now she's really grabbed hold of it learning the in and out of the water side of it, not just the out side of it, and that's a big help to the rest of us.
Anything else for Brian? Brian, anything else for us?
Uh, I think that should be about it, I guess I was going to mention the lead that uh, I guess last time I was here, I didn't, never even slipped my mind that you were new to the board too, but so I was going to mention our, you know, we do have a very good working relationship with Fish and Wildlife. Uh, we haven't had a much issue at all with NRCS, uh, actually, we haven't had to deal with them since I've been on the board, but Fish and Wildlife, we do work very well with, uh, they prefer to work with us as a board rather than landowners in a lot of spots. And you know, it's, a lot of personal feelings as a Fish and Wildlife and all that works, but we approach it as it's a job for each of us and politics we, that's a bigger realm to be dealt with and then we're standing out in the field working with it, so. We work with them and have, you know, whether it gets us further or not and getting water moving or dealing with it, having a good relationship, uh, never hurts with them, so.
Well, it's, it, it's an issue that was inherited. You didn't come into it and?
Uh, it's long roots to that problem, I, I can't say I agree with the way it is, but like I said, it's, this is a forum, maybe fighting out politics on it, so.
Yeah. That'd be left for those with higher pay grades than all of us. Um, those, those in Washington would be left for that battle. So waters of the US is an interesting concept.
Yeah, there's some high-ranging impacts that could be felt, it's something to discuss right now, so.
Yeah.
And then you see it being dealt with in the field that rounds the county, it brings home a little more of, also those decisions affect you.
Absolutely. Well, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, Brian.
Contact us if you have any issues still up.
Thank you.
I have one bridge I gotta discuss a little.
Uh, anything else under our work business? If not, moving on to the uh, new business, approved raffle permit.
Who approved?
We have a motion to approve the raffle permit.
Second.
Second. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, request for ATM in the memorial building. This might be a little more complex than a raffle permit.
Question I have is what's it gonna cost us? Is it gonna cost us, I mean, have them in there? What's the responsibility of having it? Is this, my thing is there an insurance fee that I have to pay if you have money in your facility? I don't know.
Plus, is the ATM owned by Heald, Tapper?
Is this another Leclerc's ATM that are just moving up here for?
That I don't know, um, I'm wondering if, if uh, you old or a lot is on their own. Um, certainly there's companies or people that do uh, own their own, um, you can buy those and have one yourself and and then you recoup the transaction fees, but then you're responsible for all the, all the maintenance of that. I'm not sure exactly where it would be placed um, in there. I would assume somewhere in the main entryway.
People next.
And then you'd want it somewhere that has a camera. Camera deal. And what is, like you said, our liability of it to with insurance or what have you, is there additional?
I don't think it's probably a bad idea, I just think there's a lot more questions to be asked.
That's what I thought too, is here. For the moment, it's going to be used, yes, I agree that there's a use for it, but you know, all the days that that building sits unused. You've got a ATM of X one dollars in it, just kind of sits there, you know, re-fighting damage to facility that the potential for damage to the facility that we don't really need the headache for.
Certainly when the courthouse is open, the memorial building's open.
Yeah.
Um, no restrictions to the access of it and not a great deal of traffic through there to keep an eye on it, so, and there is that concern. And the other concern would be, you know, is that the only individual that'd be interested in placing one there?
I was gonna ask that question too, but like Candy said, it definitely has to be under a camera system.
Yeah. So. We have plenty of those over there and they're they're in good spots and and uh, and there's certainly events over there and, and being used for different events that I can see where an ATM would be that special. It seems like nobody carries cash anymore, but they have the ability to go to an ATM anywhere you want. And there's plenty of them downtown, um, you know, Lever's across the street is open till ten, uh, with an ATM operating in that, I know.
From their brain cast one.
Brain cast one, uh, during their normal business hours, or is it open all twenty-four seven? Do they have access to that, that I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Um, but I know that, you know, also several of the businesses downtown, they have one as well within their, within walking distance. I think if we take this under consideration, maybe we open it up and and see if what our liabilities would be as far as having it in there and then maybe open it up to others that would be interested in. And then maybe a rent that we would ask for.
Does it consume some electricity?
Consumes a lot. A little bit of electricity, a little bit of space and a little bit of internet access that it would require. So.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with that too. If you look into the liability, our liability for having it in here would be the place to start, I guess.
And then I would suggest that it gets put out on the opportunity of it has to be a big thing instead of just letting someone bring one in.
Right.
Someone else would come back and say, why didn't I have the opportunity to handle everything else?
Well, if that was the exclusive business that had the serving rights exclusively for the memorial building, but there's other events that bring in other, you know, I'm pretty sure that pros and Thursdays and.
I think that's why it's been up to the event to bring in the machine. But I give it's probably paying about two.
Right. So.
That, that's the only event that I know of that.
Uses it.
That an ATM is.
For the fishing term that goes.
Yeah, it brings in a lot of people into that facility.
And maybe that's, I mean, if liability issues are problem, then maybe we can work out something with, I don't, I don't even know who does ATM. Is it LeFleur's? Are they the only ones?
No, there's a couple of swans, swan plus.
They have.
A relative.
Oh, you want to.
There's like three or three or four people that actually do it in the area.
Yeah.
Oh, this is scary.
Well, it is so.
Yeah.
So, so we can put it all in bed and have our attorney and give something to to bow to take a look at what our potential liabilities would be. And, you know, have Jackie or Candy or whoever wants to reach out to our insurance and see what type of additional liabilities would would fall upon that and we could maybe, I don't know if we have time to get that back by the next meeting in two weeks or by the time it gets out to the people that want bid, maybe it might be a little. But we could ask for bids and ask for liability questions and what else we need to ask?
We'll check with insurance first.
Check with insurance first before we ask for bids?
Yeah, I think that was an incredible high and low for us to be in for.
Okay.
And Bo may have an opinion.
Sure. Yeah, we'll do that. Want that as a motion or that we look into insurance and legal liabilities before we put it out on bid?
I would say.
Okay. Motion and second to check in with legal and insurance issues of hosting that. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approved joint powers with the LEC for part-time custodian. On the back of this, there's an agreement with the Ramsey County and the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center. Lake Region Law Enforcement Center was looking for a part-time custodian. We had a part-time custodian that was looking for more hours. And I think this was a win-win for all parties involved. And we had a young man that was eager for additional opportunity to work. Anybody have any questions, objections? With the sharing of the our custodial staff. And you can see that's and payment would be split fifty fifty along of the time. And that and law enforcement center would just reimburse Ramsey County for those expenses. We continue to pay salary and all the other.
Oh, with the benefits? So they're gonna be paying half the benefits?
Yep.
That was the only question. I couldn't remember what we had talked about.
Yep. So. And Seth started there on yesterday, so.
I would move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to agree on the joint powers agreement for shared custodial services with Lake Region Law Enforcement Center. Any further discussion?
Did you, did you, could be retroactive to the first?
If we could do that to the first, but we started in full time on the first of February. So if we could do that, if you amend your motion.
I would move to amend my motion to be retroactive to the first of February.
And would you be okay with seconding of that as well? Perfect. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Visitors delegations. It looks like we cleared everybody out, so. Portfolios. I'm gonna start over here with Commissioner Gessner.
I was six, so I missed the library board meeting last Wednesday. We got very bored going up tomorrow. Chair of planning mentioned, we're in the process of going to those interviews. Coming up here this month. Extension, getting their reviews from India's U and I'll be sitting there.
Chair of planning or. We're giving you a promotion.
Must be a period.
Uh, meeting with the North Pacific Council on the sixteenth. It's a very annual meeting. It was my first meeting with them. That's really all I've got right now.
Okay, Commissioner Hottis.
Which ones did I start with?
Everyone you'd like.
Social Services, we've met twice. Their staffing is coming around. They've got a couple additional employees to help take the load off of some of the others down there. I did see on their budget, which I don't fully understand yet, but we're getting some money back from them, like forty some thousand, forty-five thousand or something from last year. I don't remember the number, but there'll be some of that coming back. I am not familiar with that process, but from what I see, Social Services going to that mountain lakes district zoning, whatever you wanna call that, looks to be a really a blessing for us and for everyone. They seem to work pretty good together. Let's see, the next one is the Heritage Center. Met with them twice. Of course, there really got concerns for the Heritage Center itself, the building with that flat roof. It's gonna be a lot of dollars involved up there. I think I mentioned that last time. Still same with the boiler too. There's some repairs that need to be done to the building. They got a lot of activities planned coming up to include really formal gala, gala in May. So that's kind of where they're at. We did meet with the senior center here recently and I was really surprised at their budget, the money that goes through that senior center, center. They had to raise their meals. They didn't get a lot of raises to their employees. That averages about eight percent trying to reclaim people because their salaries were so low. Otherwise, that seemed pretty good. I did finally get to, we met with R C and D, possibly the pillars. And they're working on local food stuff and them kinds of things. So I've been attending meetings. It's been, actually been very informative. I learned, I learned a lot about what each one of them organizations and common parts towards, what they do and how they work. Still a long ways to go. I did come with the first meeting, however. I've gone as from me to make a motion or a second because I'm not gonna make a motion for something I don't know about yet, but it's, it'll come up pretty late.
There is never a shortage of meetings to go to as Commissioner. Outside of this one here, there's a lot of different boards and organizations that going in all different directions. So appreciate your update.
Yes, we don't mind talking.
Commissioner Volk, we'll start off with lake access.
One thing basically there, the access to the lake has been good. Cleaning station out at Ed's, they removed a lock because they were having a lot of trouble with it. So it's not gonna have a lock to the facility since they have that trouble under camera. Forward Devil's Lake, you got W I P project that's been, money's been flowing and being finalized. The park activity center's moving along. Devil's Lake AMC movie theater, they have a prospect that wants to move into that. So then that would open up more opportunities for the park sport activity, for something else other than a movie theater. So that could be great for the public. Eventide, I don't know if it's a good, good stability. They have someone that's gonna find that and make it into housing. But that's just, they're just working on that. They're literally action on bills for child cares and they were able to get money back to some of the childcare that had more than twenty-five. More of the centers that others, moving on to Lake Region Health. I got voted in on chair on there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of changes as far as people with the county, but everything there is going good. Retirement for parent member name that has.
And that.
And that's the end of the month, I believe. I remember right, but other than that, other than that, so working process. And then I'll let you do the LEC.
Okay.
I'll have.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, LEC is, is going really well. I'm really happy with the staff, the administration over there. They're currently working really well together. Captain Kraft has, I think he's down to one in corrections is all. And after our DOCR inspection last month, we're slowly starting to increase the number of daily inmates. We could expand up to eighty. And I think last, last yesterday I got checked and there was fifty-one in there. So baby steps on getting back, making sure that staff is comfortable with, with, you know, looking after the additional people inside. It's a major undertaking, but and we did look at some legislative help. I don't know if it's gonna happen this year or this session. You know, there's no specific bill out there designated for that, but Representative Johnson, currently Speaker of the House, was willing to maybe go to bat and look at adding on as an addendum to another bill. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but it's a major expense, not only for Ramsey County, city of Devil's Lake. Benson County is, is expending an awful lot of money on incarceration law enforcement. And then it spreads throughout the entire state and some of these smaller counties that either are operating a local jail themselves or a regional jail with other counties. The rising cost of doing business, incarcerating individuals and employing people to fill those shifts, finding those shifts to cover has been difficult for everybody. So we're not alone in that battle. It's not unique to us, but we do, you see a great deal of it within our community. Let's see, anything else happening at the jail that's of interest? You know, we have our next meeting on the fifteenth of February. We've been working with Bo and Bo's been working with Jack Yonkers, the city attorney, and Howard Swanson, the attorney for the law enforcement center, to come up with a facilities agreement for the facility itself and looking at whether or not, you know, leasing that back to the LEC and having the LEC as the responsible party of and, you know, take that argument of who owns that this or who owns that away from city-county responsibility, put it on the backs of the LEC board and that foundation itself to make things operational. If they do need bigger items, we'll have something like that written into our five county or four county, five entity joint powers agreement where the expenses are spread throughout all five and based on percentage of usage and within the entities, I think is maybe the best way or one of the ways that they're leaning on going with that. So looking to set up the, a joint meeting between city and county, just to kind of hammer out some of those details. Would like to have that relatively quick. Get together with Spencer Halverson, city administrator, Mayor Moll, Candy and myself and see what would be available for everybody's time and workable. And make sure that we have a draft agreements of those sitting in front of us so we can take a look at them. Discuss the differences that we have amongst them and hopefully move forward in a more progressive fashion than we have operated in the past. I think there, in the past, there's been a little consternation on how that was operated or how it was funded, but I think it's moving forward and we've got a good group of guys at the city and a good group of guys here and we're hopefully be able to hammer that deal out and get a joint powers agreement or to the other counties for their approval as well. So that will be happening, I think, relatively quick, depending on the timelines of the attorneys. You never know how busy they get. And I know Bo's got some big cases that he's working on and taking a lot of his time too, so. We have to be cognizant of that. I'm not, I don't wanna overtax him or overburden him, but this is something that needs to get done and the sooner the better will be best. Airport will meet next Monday, I believe, with the airport authority. We're still, still moving forward on terminal expansion out there at the airport. Something in the neighborhood of thirteen million dollars in federal, federal covid dollars that will be spent out there over the next couple of years on, on building projects, so should be going game clusters, so. Extension, we've heard from them. Candy's got a deputy filling Nathan's position starting tomorrow. So looking forward to having a whole staff in there. Finally, she's been operating a one man show for a couple of months and it's late nights, early mornings, weekends, so. But when you think what else is going on? Chamber, everybody knows that executive director, Halla Vista, is retiring. I believe it's the first of April and they're being searched out for replacement. So looking for.
Is anyone directed a even open up for Jazza?
He did. It's been open for a while. I'm not sure if they've gotten any applicants or not, but I see it advertising every once in a while it'll pop up, so.
There you go. I'm already tired. I'm already tired. I'd be tired. Question on LEC?
Yes.
I got to a former, recent former Commissioner from Wolf County. And he was saying they're gonna close the LEC over there or the law enforcement, yeah, law enforcement center over there? Because how does that affect us?
Well, it's funny that you bring that up.
Oh.
I've heard that they are looking at a new facility over there. They have some issues with the longevity of their building and some structural integrity issues, pipes and and different things like that that were based on products that were used fifty, sixty years ago in the design and construction. They're looking at a potential multi-county facility, around forty-eight beds, I've heard. I know they're hoarding another county that's belong to the LEC. And we wanna hang on to that county because, and they wanna hang on to us and and have a buy-in and a stake within the LEC that they've been contributing to over the years. And to add a distance for their deputies to transport individuals, so I'm hoping that they don't, you know, look at that and but it's something that, you know, is gonna have to be on the back of our minds as well. Because I, I think I can, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm thinking that their law enforcement center and ours were built approximately at the same time. And that could be, you know, it's the same type of design and and, you know, people say, well, geez, the building's only fifty years old. It should last longer than that. But you have to remember too, that it's a building that's used three sixty-five, seventy-four seven. And utilized by some maybe not most respectful individuals staying there. So it's used hard and it's used every day of the week. You know, where you have courthouses that are sixty years old, a hundred years old, that are in perfectly good shape, but you know, courthouse is only open forty hours a week and you know, five days a week and those kind of things where a jail doesn't get that time off. And so they're used hard and we, we've got a great maintenance staff over there and doing the necessary repairs, but it does something that should be a concern and we need to start planning and making a long-term plan for if that were to happen to us. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. But. Well. So we, we would hope that there would be state funding for something like that or state assistance or maybe, you know, lower no-interest loans or bonds or something like that, but it's something you don't wanna think about or you hope that it lasts forever, but nothing does, so. Anything else for the good of the order? Anybody else have anything else they wanna, announcements they'd like to make?
We should try and set up some meeting time for plant commission? Plant commission, so we can get that all rolling. We just call the meeting and just, you know, we talk about
Yep.
Chair in the meeting just to get things we gotta reorganize.
Start it, reorganize.
We do that sometime this month.
Yep. I think that would be possible.
Sure. What's like timeframe? Right away in the morning?
What worked in the past, I guess. We've got other people that have jobs that we gotta consider. It doesn't matter to me. The last Thursday I'm gonna see what surprises you.
Looking at my long calendar. I didn't read bottom of page. Well, I think the twentieth is a holiday.
Yep.
Yep. Twenty-first is Commissioner.
Twenty-first is Commissioner. Is there a county day at the legislature? Is that? That's in March. So we'd be looking at that last whole week, which is the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. Twenty-first, like Candy mentioned, is a mission meeting. And then you have the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and then the month is done. I would think we looked at meeting space for next week in the building and I think the, there's a jury trial that has a lot of basement meetings spaces reserved. Whether or not they use it all or need it all, but we can never tell, but I guess we could have that meeting in here as well. Where is that? How many people on the panel?
Take a look at historical room, I think, and see what's
Pretty much anything worked for me except for twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
I'm gonna say I'll be here. You won't be? I might pull my door by the camera. Are you gonna be at a restaurant or something? I'm gonna be away.
Well, I, I don't think it'd be a full commission.
Uh-uh.
I think it'd be
Yeah, it's just a
Yes.
Just a, yeah, a planning commission.
Yeah.
Do whatever. He's gonna do whatever that, right?
I mean, I'll see what rubies are available. And then
Yeah, I'm very open.
And I wonder if we could do a, one of those doodle things where you know, here are the dates and times, please respond well your preference kind of thing and see what you get the best response from. And go that way.
Yes.
Yeah. So. I know I responded to some. I don't know if I've ever filled one out or I started one. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, motion adjourned.
So move.
Sorry. Your agenda. Thank you all for coming.